Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the School Board Special Meeting Video Conference, 7:30 a.m. on Friday, October 30th. Pursuant to Minnesota Statute, Section 13D.021, in the current state of emergency due to the COVID-19 pandemic, this special session of the Independent School District 279 School Board will be conducted via electronic means. Superintendent Corey McIntyre and Board Chair Michael Stoffey have determined that due to the health pandemic and emergency declaration, a meeting format allowing for in-person attendance by the school board and superintendent is not practical prudent for the special session. Members of the public, up to 10, are able to attend this virtual meeting in person at the Educational Service Center under CDC and MDH guidelines. Members of the public may also monitor a meeting electronically, streaming, and archive copy of the video recording will be available from the district website. So I'm going to call this meeting to order. And with that, I would like to do a roll call. Sherri, could you do the roll call?
Director Bristol?
Here.
Director Dawson Walton?
Here.
Director Heather Douglas?
Here.
Director Muscata Jones?
Here.
Director Simons?
Here.
Superintendent McIntyre?
Here.
Director Ostaffy?
Here. Okay, with that, I want to turn it over to Superintendent McIntyre to discuss the 279 Ready to Restart Osseo Area School Learning Model Recommendations.
Right, thank you, Chair Ostaffy. Thank you, Chair Ostaffy, and good morning, Board members, and thanks once again for meeting at this early hour. I do want to start by thanking you once again for your hard work on all of our 279 Ready to Restart opening learning models work, our key readiness indicators, our dashboards, and everything that has been a part of our start of the school year. I appreciate the support you've shown through your actions with the opening of the school year in distance learning and all the way up to our current model of K-12 hybrid, ensuring that all the safety components of the Minnesota Safe Learning Plan have been able to be implemented here in Osseo Area Schools. This morning, I'm bringing a new recommendation in response to the changing conditions we're seeing. I'm asking the Board to approve my recommendation to move to the model of hybrid learning for elementary and distance learning for secondary on Monday, November 9th, including providing targeted supports at the secondary level for some of our students receiving intensive services and special education, English learner services, and clinical mental health services. I'm also recommending we continue athletics and activities as long as they can be done safely while in distance learning at the secondary level. So next, I'll briefly present the updated information. That's the basis for this recommendation. Just give me a second here. Okay, can I just have someone give me a verbal that you can see the slides, okay?
Yeah, I'm good.
Thank you. Okay, our current readiness dashboards reflect our 10 key readiness indicators for each learning model, and one of those readiness indicators that inform our decisions to change learning models is meeting our state requirements based on county case rates, consultation with MDE, MDH, and Hennepin County Public Health, which I'll update you on in just a moment. Our ISD 279 Safe Learning Plan levels is our version of the Minnesota Safe Learning Plan, and it currently reflects the district in Level 3 with our current model of K-12 hybrid, which we started on September 28th. In order to make decisions for changing our learning models, we've been following our five-step process, which includes continuously reviewing our new county and city case rate data, district COVID statistics, our key readiness indicators, and completing the required consultation with Minnesota Department of Education, Minnesota Department of Health, and the Regional Support Team, and Hennepin County Public Health, along with additional input from district and school leaders, union leadership, and feedback received from staff, families, and students. Take this information, and the district administration designs and develops the recommendation, and we bring that recommendation to the Board for any district-wide decisions. And then lastly, we communicate and update stakeholders on the status of our learning models. This slide represents the state parameters for the county case rate counts and learning models for school districts that was used in as a starting point. Please note that the learning model for county case rate data between 30 and 49 is hybrid learning for elementary students and distance learning for secondary students. New guidance from MDE this past week is that school districts need to take into account not only this county-level data when determining learning models, but also city-level data, number of confirmed cases, quarantines, and close contacts in our school community, each of our school buildings in our district, and other data such as individuals with influenza-like illness. And providing you with the most up-to-date case rate data from Hennepin County through October 19th, the Hennepin County case rate has increased 3.3 points, putting the county number at 29. This graph provides you with the updated local city data. In Brooklyn Center saw an increase of 12.6 points and is now at 53.4. Brooklyn Park saw an increase of 8.5 and is now at 48.9. Maple Grove saw an increase of 1.7 and is now at 30.3. Lastly, Plymouth saw an increase of 5 points and is now at 26.5. Out of the 18 cities with 10,000 or more residents included in the Hennepin County data, we again have the top two or highest two cities in the county with Brooklyn Center and Brooklyn Park. When looking at our COVID-19 statistics since August 20th, which is our school year-to-date totals, we've had 124 positive cases so far between staff and students, and this has gradually been increasing weekly with 25 this past week. When looking at our symptomatic cases reported, we've had year-to-date since August 20th, 599 cases this year, gradually increasing each week with 116 symptomatic cases this past week. And when looking at our close-contact cases reported, we've had year-to-date 768 cases this year with 201 of those close-contact cases in this past week. So in summary, when you add our positive cases, symptomatic cases, and close contacts, we've had nearly 1,500 total, with 325 of those in the last week, which basically resulted in quarantine for those involved. And this really has had an impact on our ability to continue to staff and operate our schools effectively. For example, we're now experiencing a teacher absentee rate of about two and a half times the normal absentee rate we see. We also have regularly been in consultation, as required, with MDE and MDH Regional Support Team in Hennepin County Public Health. This week, the Hennepin County Supervising Epidemiologist was very concerned, actually, her words were shocked and very concerned, about the amount that the rates have increased since last week. We saw a large jump last week as well, the significant concern for all three cities being over that threshold of 30, and the seriously concern about our cities that are near or over 50. The cities in our district are continuing to experience an accelerated spread and rapid upward trend with a positivity rate that's concerning. Hennepin County had their highest single-day total on Wednesday with 530 cases. And the expectation is case rates will continue to climb for the weeks to come. Increased case rates in Hennepin County and our cities in our district are reflective of community spread and are not due to specific reasons such as assisted living facility outbreak, manufacturing facility, or correctional facility outbreak. With the expectation that case rates will continue to increase for weeks to come, they supported the move to distance learning for secondary and staying in elementary hybrid, all the while continuing to monitor this quickly-changing situation very closely. Two things to note, first, a number of districts in the metro have decided or are planning to move to distance learning first two weeks here in November. Secondly, we did have conversation about moving schools to distance learning in the cities where the highest case rates exist, but we do have all three cities over that threshold of 30 regarding the state model of distance learning for secondary schools. And it's also important to remember that with our inter-district transfer and open enrollment process, we have students attending different schools than where they live or their boundary school across the district. I know this is hard to read, but I just wanted to give you the visual here. We did create an updated key readiness dashboard for this model of elementary hybrid and secondary distance learning for the Minnesota Safe Learning Plan. And again, I know it's hard to read, but it reflects nine out of the 10 key readiness indicators in this model are all in the green zone or Level 3, our highest level, indicating we're ready to transition to this model. The one indicator in the yellow is our childcare indicator where we're continuing to work on ensuring childcare is fully staffed. And then lastly here, my recommendation is to continue with activities and athletics while in distance learning at the secondary level for as long as we are able. We will have to discontinue if there is an outbreak, substantial uncontrolled spread, a significant degree of impact, or multiple confirmed cases, or a large-scale outbreak, or if the Minnesota Department of Better Health Department directs us to stop. Our COVID-19 safety plan for activities and athletics is based on those requirements by MDE and MDH in the high school league. And right now, it's in place and it's working, so my recommendation is to continue for the time being. All right, so just some additional comments here. As we wrap up, since early August, we have communicated that we can expect movement amongst the learning models throughout the year based on the evolving virus activity. And we are experiencing an accelerated rate of positive cases in our communities and in our district numbers. As a community, we need to collectively stay committed to the primary health precautions of wearing masks, social distancing, and avoiding large groups. Without the ability to do that well, we will see even higher positive cases and high numbers of student and staff quarantine occurrences in our buildings that will jeopardize our ability to keep our schools open at the elementary level. So in closing, as I've said before, it needs to be said again, please know I don't take this decision lightly. I know it's affecting lives in our district and everyone it touches. For some, it means stress; for others, it brings relief. We have heard from parents who strongly oppose this decision and from parents who strongly support it. I understand there is no easy answer here, and there's no way to please everyone with any learning model decision. We will continue to base our decisions as best we can on state direction and guidance in our local, county, city, and district data. As said before, and I want to say again, because of the COVID-19 pandemic, change has been the only constant, it seems, and it continues to test our collective spirit. I sincerely appreciate the patience and understanding of all of our stakeholders as we navigate these challenging times. Please know my goal continues to be with this recommendation, the ability to ensure that we provide our scholars with the best educational experience possible while doing it as safely as possible. So Chair Ostaffy with that, my recommendation is to move to hybrid learning for elementary and distance learning for secondary starting on Monday, November 9th, with athletics and activities continuing on. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Superintendent McIntyre, and I think you mean to stay in hybrid for elementary and move to distance in secondary.
Correct, thanks for pointing.
No problem. So, Board members, I guess we can just move to a motion and then go into discussion and any questions for Superintendent McIntyre. Is there a motion to move our secondary learning model from hybrid to distance learning?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Now let's go to the discussion. Let's start with, just the way we're on my screen, let's start with Director Douglas.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you, Corey, for a really succinct and informational update on where we stand and why we're being recommended this move. I know that it's going to be really hard for a lot of our families, but I also believe that it's the right decision given the circumstances. And I also really appreciate the specific commentary on sports, because I know that's a really big concern for our families. And I was just wondering if you could just share again for some of our families what distance plus is for students that need that.
Thank you, Director Douglas. Yeah, so we will be finalizing that by early next week, but our intention is to provide support safely, safely supports for in-person learning for our students that have been, maybe have our most significant disabilities or most significant language needs, along with the most significant kind of mental health challenges that have been receiving clinical mental health services. So our case managers and other staff will be reaching out individually to their families and students to find out if they're comfortable or willing to do that and begin to schedule what that might look like on a case-by-case basis per their individual plans.
Thank you.
Director Dawson Walton?
Um, yeah, Corey, I would echo, I just, I thank you for your diligence in, you know, this has definitely consumed you, and you know, it's so important. We've heard, you know, I look at, you know, in our role in education, and I mean, we do, you know, our number one is to educate and to ensure safety for our students and staff. So I really do believe that, you know, those two, even though those two foundational aspects of our system are also what we're hearing from our community. And I think I really want to let our community know too, we hear you, the emails, the texts that come in, even on social media. It's a pretty complex situation in terms of, you know, just the various label, excuse me, layers and levels that goes into this decision above and beyond our school board. But, you know, I guess my question to Corey would be, knowing that, the indication from what you've received from MDE, MDH, and Hennepin County shows that numbers will continue to rise. And so is there like a glimmer of, let's say, I'm not going to say hope, but like is there, what's kind of the trajectory, I guess I'd say, from now until, you know, we're in this mode of your recommendation, and then we know we're entering these winter months, but then is there a trajectory of even lessening and going even reverse to even hybrid in our schools?
Yeah, thank you, Director Dawson Walton, and that is our hope. I like that word, hope, and that's our intention is to try to get students back in schools safely as possible, as soon as possible. The best I can give you based on the health experts is really right now, they're pretty confident about the next four to six weeks is their best prediction about, you know, this upward trend in the cases. So, you know, that puts us well into the winter months, but maybe possibly by winter or even early spring. And my hope is we see that starting to turn. I think it really depends on the behavior of all of us out in the community and doing all the things we can to mitigate. The better we all do together, the sooner schools, you know, we can have students back in full-time safely. So that's the best guidance I've been given at this point. Hopefully, that's helpful.
Thank you.
Director Muscata Jones?
I want to say thank you so much for the diligence of speaking to professionals and experts in this area. I also want to say I appreciate, I've been hearing a lot from parents with kids with special needs, and so I appreciate you addressing that today and to let families know that. If that applies to you, to please continue to talk to your case manager, because speaking on any one individual experience is difficult, and so you need to, your case manager can help with that. Another thing I'm wondering is, is there ever a way that we will separate our very youngest learners, pre-K, K, first, second, something like that, as the numbers increase? And what seems, you know, appropriate for differing learning styles? Just because in my experience, it's much more difficult for our youngest learners to be doing distance learning.
Thank you, Director Muscata Jones. We continue to evaluate that as we look at those readiness indicators, and we have, you know, continued to explore that possibility. So as we move forward, I know that we're going to look at everything from operations to staffing and those other things around. Does that model look like a viable one for us as we continue to move into the future, depending on the activity of the virus and its impact on us? So thank you for asking about that.
For sure, and my priority is to make sure that we are keeping everyone as healthy as possible physically and emotionally. And so I just want to reiterate that it's difficult for all of us to be moving in and out of models. And if we can have any kind of stability for a little while, I know that's difficult with virus activities, and everyone wants to get back into the classroom as soon as we possibly can in a safe manner, to really be able to, for the sake of the mental health of our teachers and our students, to be able to concentrate on, you know, one kind of way of teaching. And I know that's just a statement I made, but thank you, I really appreciate it.
Chair Ostaffy?
Yes.
I just, I just wanted to say that there's, there seems to be an audio issue for people, and so I guess it's really choppy. And so I just wanted to let people know we'll have a cleaner copy after, and we're really sorry about that. Just wanted to add that, so people can't hear.
I did want to add one more thing, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry.
I, no, that's okay. I just, I just want to say to everyone who is watching, even though it's choppy, we need to do this together. And please encourage your children to wear masks at school. I'm getting students emailing us saying that that's a problem. And just for the safety feeling, if for no other reason, of other students. And I'm not judging or saying that any parent is not doing this, but just as a, no matter how good of parents we are, our children sometimes do things we don't want them to do. So let's just keep, you know, reminding our students that we want to make sure everybody's safe.
All right, thank you. Director Bristol?
Good morning. Corey, thank you. I know it's been a rough week for you. I've been watching this, and you've been very supportive and helpful in giving us information all along. I know that for many parents on the line today, it may be a surprise that we're doing this new approach where we have the activities continuing. And so I don't know if they're aware of the fact that you got some additional guidance that's allowing that to continue. So if you could maybe help them understand how we're doing that and how that's going to impact not only maybe activities that happen out on the football field, but other activities that might be happening indoors, I think that would be clarifying for everybody that's watching.
Yeah, thank you, Director Bristol, and we did receive new guidance this week. You know, at the end of last week, the guidance was a bit different. And I think with some things that have happened around the state, we got new guidance Tuesday night, very late Tuesday night, that districts can continue to offer athletics and activities as long as we're not seeing those large-scale outbreaks or high-level impacts on, you know, teams or individual schools. So as long as we've been, we've been able to avoid that, we're going to be able to continue offering our athletics and really kind of making those decisions at a local level. So I'm hopeful that, you know, if we can continue to follow those safety plans, that should, in my hope, allow the fall season to be completed and move into that winter sports and activity season safely and continue to move in that direction. So we were basically given that permission this week.
Thank you. So, you know, I think that it's important for, you know, all the people that have been writing us to know that we're doing everything we can to allow as much of a normal experience as possible in these abnormal times. And because we all know that these are defining times for our students, and we want, we want them to have the most out of it that they can get, you know, because none of us want to see them have to go home, none of us want to see them isolated, none of us want to see any of those things. And, you know, we're constantly looking for a way to do these things better and differently. And so I thank you and the rest of the administration for that. One other question I have, you know, when we look at the readiness indicators, and you mentioned that the childcare is still yellow, what, if any, impact of this move is there on childcare? I'm thinking these are not students that are impacting childcare, so is it just the continuous ongoing issue or is there something else?
Yeah, you're exactly right. It's a continuous, ongoing challenge we've had, really with any model right now that we're dealing with. That childcare continues to be a challenge, but because the model does involve, you know, the elementary level, we keep that on there just so we can continue to track our metrics around that as far as making sure we can staff that offering as well as we can. So yeah, it's a carryover from some of the other models we've been working on.
Okay. Well, to all of you that have been writing on all sides of the issue, just know that we care, we're listening. If we can't get back to you and right away, because there's such a huge volume of it, don't know, know that everyone's getting read, and it's very impactful on all of us on the Board. We really, we know what is going on, and, you know, we really appreciate the time you're taking to write, the detail that you're giving, the thought that you're putting into your positions, and it's all going into the decisions that we're making today. So thank you.
Mike, I think you're muted there. Thank you.
Chair Ostaffy, you're here.
So thank you, Corey, and Director Simons?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I mean, to say this is a difficult decision is certainly an understatement. The majority of the work that we do is really being able to select from multiple good options to best deliver on our mission and serve our students. And certainly, none of us expected to be in a position where we're making a decision that many families have expressed in either case will have harmful effect either to their students' safety or their academic or overall well-being. So in this case, I find myself that I simply have to be direct and transparent. So I really do believe maximizing in-person instruction, I think we've all said this, is best for our students. And I do believe that our health and safety measures create a safe environment for our scholars, even when the community case numbers are climbing. But we also made a promise to our families as to how decisions would be made, and that's why we set our decision model forward. We were clear in that criteria, and at the time, the state set those parameters around cases per 10,000, indicated we cannot be less restrictive. And even though, though that's changed just in a matter of a few days to enable us to consider local data or other factors in that decision model, we did set a model, and we made a promise to our families that that's the model that we would be using, and that was their understanding when selecting the option to go into the Distance Learning Academy or to stay in this situation where we knew we could be moving. So I believe we really need to hold to that promise to our families. However, with that, I do think that we need to update our decision model in advance of the second trimester now that there's new parameters. So I think that should be an immediate priority for our work session to review our decision model and begin to factor in that flexibility that's now been clarified to us so that we can again be very clear what the decision model will be and enable our families to make the right decision that's best for their child as we move into the upcoming second trimester. So, and again, I'd like to echo that we, we've received so many emails, and we read, we do read everyone, and they're extremely impactful. There's two that, in my mind, that stick out to me, which is when, when parents are writing, screenshotting their kid's grades, talking us about how they've seen negative effects, that's, that's really impactful, and we hear that. We don't want our students to be declining in academic or mental health, and that's, that's, we hear you, and we don't want that for any of our students. And we also hear from families who are frustrated that if we make a decision to remain in hybrid, that we're jeopardizing the safety of their student and their family, and they'll remove their child from our system. So this is, we hear all of that, and there are no easy answers, and we respect all of those perspectives and feedback. So please know that we do hear you. So I hope that we can continue to move forward, we can build the parameters and reestablish that commitment to our families on how we'll use that flexibility going forward so that we can have our families making the best choice for their students going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Simons. Superintendent McIntyre, yesterday, you shared with me the number of actual transmission cases that we've had in the schools. Could you share that with everybody, please? The number of transmission cases connected, traced to the schools?
Yeah, we have not had, we have not had any confirmation of actual transmission in the, in the buildings, which is a testament to our Safe Learning Plan efforts and COVID plans with, I would add to that. And if I could, I would add to that, that's been a good, that's what we want, right? That's exactly what we're hoping for. And with the increasing positive cases and symptomatic cases in close contact, I'm concerned that that could change, and I'm hearing from colleagues around the metro that that is happening. So we're trying to minimize the likelihood of transmissions happening, but our risk factors go up the more cases we see in our buildings.
Right, and these transmissions- Right, and these transmissions that are occurring amongst students, they're occurring in the community. We've had, at an average rate of around 40 per 14 days per 10,000, which is about 600, and I know it's gone up lately. So we've had 600 to 800 cases at least in the last two weeks across our district, but not one of them was traced to the school. So the school is a safe place where it is distancing, where it is clean, where we are taking those precautions, whereas the community is a less safe place where transmission is occurring. So what we're saying, we want to take our students and put them out into the community and not into, and not keep them in the classrooms, which are arguably a much safer place, based upon the numbers you just shared. Correct?
I'm not sure I totally agree with you there. Our guidance from our experts have been to the fact that we're going to see increases posit, increased positive cases, increased symptomatic cases, and increased close contact cases, meaning increased quarantining, our risk of transmission will increase, is my opinion. But again, that's just based on what I'm hearing from our consultation calls, and I get that not everyone's in agreement with the metrics and the data, and that's the challenge of this whole thing, right?
I'm looking at the state view of the schools, and our numbers are actually two weeks fresher than what the numbers we're getting from MDE, MDH, and they're saying they're going to go up. So the numbers we've just got from our own students in our own classrooms would be the latest, would be, you know, fresher than anything else. And again, even these, even though the numbers are expected to rise, we still have not had transmission in the schools that, that we know of.
That we know of.
Okay. And we're tracing, and the state's tracing, and we're tracing, and we're doing all of this work, you know, based upon what the regulations are, and it looks like they've worked, where we've kept transmission out of the schools and our kids safe in the schools. But in the community, that's a different story. That's correct.
Up to this point, again, I, my concern is that is going to change, and I've heard that changing in, in other districts around us. So we've been fortunate up to this point, and that's a testament to our teachers and our families to do what we are asking them to do. But as the projection looks, our risk factors for transmission will increase.
Community transmission has been increasing, absolutely. Transmission in our schools is zero. Okay. With that, any, any other questions?
Yes, I have a question.
Any other questions?
I have a question.
Okay.
Superintendent McIntyre, just one clarification about distance learning plus. So, you know, seniors and juniors are, you know, you know, college, or, you know, the next kind of phase is kind of on the horizon. So with distance learning plus, have you considered, or will there ever be an option for, let's say seniors to go meet with like an advisor, or go to the Career Resource Center, or anything during the, this period that if we potentially move to distance learning?
At this point, I think that can still be done virtually. So right now, we're starting with the students where we know we need to provide the most intensive services, but we will definitely keep that in mind as we move forward and see if that's a possibility, and we can do it safely. Some of those services we can provide virtually as well.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions? Jackie?
All right, yeah, I have a couple of questions. My first question is, I've been hearing from families that they are not able to get in to the Distance Learning Academy, and so what, kind of what's the waiting list? What is that looking like for families that are concerned about the rising numbers? And, you know, like what are the options? That's my first question, I'll let you take that one first.
Yeah, so thank you. We're in consultation right now, waiting a decision from the Minnesota Department of Education around our proposal to have a process for anyone who wants to enroll for DLA at its trimester break, so that we have ample time to plan for staffing, to ensure those class sizes stay manageable, and any adjustments with transportation and so forth like that. So we're hopeful to have a final approval for that process here, really any day, from the Department of Education, and then as soon as we have that, we will be communicating that out to our families.
Do we have any idea of how many people are on that waiting list? Are we talking like tens or hundreds, or?
We have not had approval from MDE to actually have a waiting list, but we are trying to informally track that through our enrollment center based on the calls and requests we get. So we, and I think what we might see with this, you know, every model kind of has a result there, an impact, so we may see maybe fewer requests from secondary now for in distance learning, and we may see maybe some increases at the elementary level if, if, you know, with this new model. So it's hard to project that, but we know people are interested, and so we're, again, continuing to wait for that green light from the Department of Ed to move forward with our, our proposal to how we can do it effectively.
And then my last question is, I know the biggest concern about going to distance learning is academic and emotional well-being. So I just want to reiterate that if we need to have any more resources to do any more creative ways of making sure that our students' social, emotional needs are met, when we have to do what we have to do to make sure everyone's safe, that I'm, you know, I'm on board for that. And then just encouragement for us to continue, because I know we're working hard at it, and we've gotten some new contracts to make sure we have more mental health professionals, but to continue addressing those needs.
Sorry, Mike, you're muted still.
Any other questions?
Yeah, so with the distance learning plus, again, reiterating on the special education and additional support, as quickly as we can get that clarity out for families, please let's get that out, because I know that's really been a high-volume topic as well, to ensure that we're being as mindful as we can and offering as much as we can to that particular group that has a higher need. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you Director Simons, and depending on the decision this morning, we will move in partnership with our Education Minnesota Aseaux leaders on how to do that effectively, and how we set that model up to work for our students. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Sherry, can you please call the vote?
Director Bristol?
Aye.
Director Dawson Walton?
Aye.
Director Simons?
Aye.
Director Ostaffy?
Nay.
Director Muscata Jones?
Aye.
Director Douglas?
Aye.
The motion passes five to one.
All right, thank you. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Sherry, can you call the, can you call the vote?
Director Ostaffy?
Aye.
Director Douglas?
Aye.
Director Muscata Jones?
Aye.
Director Dawson Walton?
Aye.
Director Simons?
Aye.
Director Bristol?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you, and again, this was to go to distance on November 9th for secondary. So thank you everybody, have a good day.